Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as a diverse community. A community from backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. Yet one common goal, that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. And in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Morosco, Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Martinez, Deputy Mayor Garcia and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into bright and prosperous future. Amen.
If you will please repeat with me the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call this meeting to order. Do a quick roll call. Councilmember Morosco. Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Garcia.
Here.
And I, Mayor White, am here. We'll now move on to our proclamations for National Emergency Preparedness Month. This one is short and sweet tonight. For National Emergency Preparedness Month, I, Dane White, Mayor of the City of Escondido, County of San Diego, State of California, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Emergency Preparedness Month.
Well, the proclamation was short.
You have a 10-minute speech?
Fifteen. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Murdock. I'm the Emergency Preparedness Manager. Thank you for proclaiming September National Preparedness Month. National Preparedness Month is held annually in September and reminds us that natural and man-made disasters can strike at any time. These emergencies can range from things such as a fire in your home to natural desires such as wildland fires, flooding, earthquakes, winter storms or extreme temperatures, just to name a few. Living in San Diego, we can all cite examples of these emergencies just within the last year. And short notice, even this afternoon, some of you may not know that Valley Center had a brush fire. I bring it up because that was only 12 miles away from us. So it's important to be prepared for any type of emergency. Now is the time to evaluate your preparedness levels, update your emergency plans and equip yourself with the necessary tools and knowledge to face adversity. Start by creating an emergency plan. The plan doesn't need to be complicated, but needs to outline communication strategies, evacuation routes and designated meeting points. Involve all family members and household members in the planning process to ensure everyone is well-prepared. Next, stay informed. Sign up for emergency alerts such as Alert San Diego and stay updated with reliable sources of information during crisis. AlertSD.org is a reliable source of emergency information. Being aware allows you to make informed decisions and take necessary actions to protect yourself and your loved ones. Finally, prepare an emergency kit that includes basic supplies such as non-perishable foods, water, first aid items, flashlights, batteries, battery-powered radios. Don't forget hygiene items and your pet supplies and comfort supplies. I often find that chocolate helps me when I'm stressed. Preparedness is a whole community effort and responsibility. While first responders work together alongside agencies such as American Red Cross, Salvation Army and the United Way, individuals and families need to also plan and prepare to help build resilience in our community. This resilience will serve to help mitigate the impacts of disaster and enhance the response to and recovery from disasters if it should occur. In closing, National Preparedness Month is not limited to September. It serves as a reminder to integrate preparedness practices into our daily lives, be proactive and ready to overcome any challenges that may come our way. By prioritizing emergency preparedness for the month, we ensure the safety and well-being of ourselves, our family and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Council want to come down for a quick photo? All right, moving on. The presenter for our next presentation has not yet arrived, so we will move on to our report out of closed session.
We do have one presentation from the San Diego County Water Authority.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Skipped right over you. Welcome, please.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing us to come this evening to give you an update on an important public works project that is helping to preserve the historic water infrastructure for our region. My name is Grace Sevilla and I'm the Public Affairs Supervisor overseeing the public outreach for the Southern First Aqueduct Facilities Improvement Project. And with me is Construction Manager, Emma Ward McNally, and she'll be sharing some details about the project in just a bit. So you last heard from us in November, so I'm going to do a quick refresher about the project before Emma goes into a few more specifics. The Southern First Aqueduct Facilities Improvement Project involves two large diameter pipelines. They were first constructed in the late 1940s and 1950s. They've served our region for decades with very safe operations, but the First and the First Aqueduct continues to be a vital part of the regional water delivery system. The project that we're working on now involves a combination of maintenance and upgrades necessary to extend the life of this vital infrastructure. The work spreads across 21 miles and involves several communities, including the city of Escondido, where a total of 41 separate work sites are located. Here, I'll turn it over to Emma to describe the work planned for Escondido in a bit more detail.
Yes, good evening. I'm Emma Ward McNally, the Construction Manager for this project. Work on the Southern First Aqueduct Facilities Improvement Project has already begun and it's expected to take about two and a half years to complete this project. We'll be working on two parallel pipelines, Pipeline One and Pipeline Two. And the pipelines will be shut down, inspected and rehabilitated in sequence to ensure that there's always one pipeline always in service during both phases of the project, so there won't be any interruption in water delivery. Work on Pipeline Two structures has already begun. It began this spring and it will continue through to next spring in 2025. Construction on Pipeline One structures will then start again or begin next spring and will continue through summer of 2026. During the first phase of the project, we'll be working on 19 structures on Pipeline Two within Escondido. Then next spring, we'll transition to the second phase and on Pipeline One, we'll be working on 22 different structures. The map on this slide here shows the locations marked by orange dots where we'll be working in the northern part of Escondido. And if you look at the map, you may notice that most of the Pipeline One and Pipeline Two structures are paired near each other, so people can expect to see the contractors return to the approximate same sites the following year to work on the corresponding structure. Sites with traffic control here in the northern portion of Escondido are shown in bold. And the contractor will have approved traffic control permits from the city of Escondido for all of these sites. The biggest impact to traffic will be the structures located at Harding Avenue, north of Escondido Creek, between East Washington Avenue and East Valley Parkway. The rehabilitation of the Water Authority's two pump well structures in that area will require the closure of the northbound lane of the portion of Harding Street that crosses over the creek from December of 2024 into summer of 2025. Work will take place between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, but traffic control measures will remain in place 24 hours a day. During the day, flaggers and changeable message signs will direct northbound and southbound traffic through the remaining open south lane, while during the night, changeable message signs will limit traffic to southbound only and northbound traffic will be detoured around North Ass Street and North Rose Street. Another interesting site on this slide is the work that's occurring at Harding Street and East Valley Parkway intersection. That's the only site on our project where work is restricted to night work only. Work will take place in the northbound lanes of Harding Street and traffic will be directed into the southbound lane for that area. As we move south here, you can see again, the majority of our structures are paired together across Pipeline One and Pipeline Two. For this portion of the work, the contractor will acquire traffic control permits for the bold sites through the county of San Diego. And on this slide, this shows the end of the work within the limits of the city of Escondido. The contractor will again acquire traffic control permits for those three sites bolded at the top of the list there through the county of San Diego. What to expect during construction? What the work for the project involves is the rehabilitation of our pipeline structures. So we're going to be doing rehab work on the outside of the structures, on the structure walls, the structure lids. And then also inside the structure, we're going to be installing new steel nozzle connection points to our pipeline as well as replacing or upgrading all of the mechanical components within these structures. Work at each site will vary, but typically major activities include clearing the area, excavation, saw cutting the walls of the existing structure, welding and then eventually site restoration. Likewise, impacts will vary by location, but typical activities involve heavy machinery with backup beepers, temporary staging of construction equipment and of course, noise and dust. Work activities are planned for Monday through Friday and select Saturdays from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then here, this photo, this was actually a structure that we rehabilitated on the northern portion of the First Aqueduct a couple of years ago. And so they're setting the new top of the precast structure. Safety is most important with construction of this scale and construction mitigation measures will be implemented for all high-impact areas. Typical construction safety measures include fencing, digital and static signage, as well as traffic control workers on busy urban intersections and corridors. I'll now turn it back to Grace to tell you a bit more about our public outreach.
Let me ask a quick question. I want to make sure I heard it correctly. You said that one section, the north of Harding, is going to be closed for an entire year?
The northbound lanes on Harding between East Washington and East Valley Parkway will be closed for about seven to eight months.
What could possibly take that long that you'd have one section closed for that long?
So at this site, we're combining two existing pump wells into a new single structure. And the reason why we need to do that is to accommodate the upgrades to our piping and connecting the two pump wells together. Because it involves both of our pipelines, we have to straddle the different shutdowns that we're using to isolate the work for Pipeline One and Pipeline Two, which is why we need to begin this December. And then the real heavy work will begin in the spring of 2025 when they actually start doing the structural renovations.
And can you go back to the map?
Sure.
Thank you. So in looking at all of these, there, go back one more.
This one here.
Go forward one more, please. So in looking at these, in looking at the amount of traffic traveled for work and school from 7:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the evening, and you're talking about that entire corridor, which was one of the primary corridors in the city of Escondido, going to be completely disrupted for over a year, perhaps two years?
No, the contractor is staggering the work. They won't have work happening concurrently at all at the sites.
But along the route-
Along that corridor, yes.
Along that corridor for two years, you're going to have complete chaos
Yes.
for anyone traveling to work from work, to school from school, et cetera.
Yeah, we do what we can to mitigate the impacts to construction and also working with the different agencies to get approved traffic control permits for this work.
That's obviously very problematic for more than half of the citizens of Escondido.
Yeah, can I jump on that? My concern is exactly in between those two spots that you had mentioned before, between, you said, East Valley Parkway and Washington, right? Yeah, my biggest concern is that we have several schools in that immediate area. So I would like to see some kind of plan that is going to be addressing that, especially for, you said it's between December and January? I'm sorry, December and June?
Yes.
December and June. So yeah, that's going to be a big issue for a lot of families that are taking that direct route or crossing that route to get to their different schools. So I'd like to see something, some kind of, some kind of plan in order to address that. I think that's extremely crucial.
So I was about to raise the issue of that we have schools there in those areas, a number of schools. And I've had to travel those areas and they're already impacted quite a bit. So are you going to be, how are you going to address this regarding NCTD? Because there's going to be an effect for our bus services. So they're going to be changing routes. So I would, I'm on NCTD, so I expect to see you coming to us over there because I think that's going to be a major problem with especially seeing hundreds of children, of students getting off buses to go to school. And this is going to be a major issue for them. The other concern that I have is water shutdown. Will that be happening on a regular basis to residents?
We, for this project, we have three planned shutdowns or outages. The first one actually occurred in February of this year. And those take place within the regular 10-day allotments that our typical shutdowns do. So in those, for those 10 days, our operations center works closely with the different cities to make sure all of our agencies have enough water and reserves to hold them over for those 10 days before we even start the shutdown.
Okay. I'll have more questions later, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also have questions. Thank you. Yeah, I think the Harding one is concerning because that runs through my district, but it's also one, there are two one-way lanes. And so there's only a light at Washington. And so there's always, you know, cars coming, it's just a challenging street no matter what. And so what kind of outreach has been done in that neighborhood? I don't know if you've already started outreach. I think you all mentioned in the past, the first time you presented to us, that you send postcards or something. Can you just share more about like exactly who's received communications, when, what the communications shared? And if there's any additional communications, outreach or canvassing plans that are planned for the immediately impacted areas?
Yeah, certainly. Grace, do you want to?
And hi Grace, nice to see you again.
Good to see you as well. So, thank you. So public communication is definitely a priority for us. And there are a number of things, the outreach began actually a year ago, so summer of 2023. And this is just one of the efforts that we're doing. I was about to outline a little bit about that. So we're providing updates not just to the city of Escondido, but we're also reaching out to civic groups such as the Chamber of Commerce, homeowners associations, schools and other stakeholders. So that includes places of worship, senior centers, et cetera. As I mentioned, so outreach to residents directly impacted began last summer. So with those folks who have work sites either on their property or immediately next to their properties, they have been contacted either in in-person meetings, phone calls, email and written notices. So that's what we've done for the folks that are right in there. Additionally, we're sharing information in a number of ways. One of them is through our website. So we have a very robust website. It's sdcwa.org/firstaqueduct. And on there, you can find any number of things, which include the fact sheet about the project, answers to frequently asked questions, community maps. So that's broken out by Rancho Bernardo, Escondido, Poway, et cetera, so specific to different communities. It includes copies of the update newsletters that we've created. And all of the materials are available, both in English and Spanish. And probably one of the highlights of this site is an interactive map where you can plug in an address, a home address, a business address, and actually see what work locations are near that address. So in addition to this, in May of 2024, we sent a construction starting soon newsletter via email. That was sent in both English and Spanish. For all of the emails that we had registered, folks that signed up for notifications. In July of this year, postcards were mailed to all residents and businesses within 1,000 feet of work sites, so 1,000-foot radius on either side. And, oops, sorry. We actually have also planned a virtual open house specifically for the city of Escondido. This is going to take place on Wednesday, September 11th. It's a lunch hour over Zoom. We're going to record it. We're going to take questions live during that hour. We're going to record it and then also transcribe the Q and A. All of that will be added to the website. And so that will be accessible. We're going to have simultaneous translation in Spanish and then all of the materials will also be translated. So all of that will continue to be available. Let's see what else I might have missed. We're going to continue to update the website as we go along. So all of these, including the slides from tonight and the materials will be added to the website. We're about to send out another e-newsletter. And we also have a project hotline, telephone hotline and an email. So let me turn to the next one here. To stay connected with us, you can access it either through the QR code, but they're also listed here. The phone number is there. That's a dedicated phone line. It's monitored on a daily basis and also the project, the project email. So on both of those, we're monitoring those closely and making sure that we respond to any residents or stakeholders or people that raise questions or concerns.
Okay, good. I was going to ask you about like a contact of liaison or when people have questions. And then when those roads are closed, is it like every day? Is it like a couple of days within a week? I'm trying to envision what it's going to look like because also along that street, there's residential parking. So people live on that street, people park on that street. So what is that going to look like?
I'll let Emma address that.
Yeah, the logistics of it, please.
But I do want to say that although construction overall is going to stretch through quite a period, it doesn't mean that work occurs every single day during that period. It'll be intermittent.
That's what I thought. So I wanted to get more of a clear picture on that. And I just think, you know, for something so big and so long, and I understand why, like we need it, right? We need to repair these. It's like, I think this requires like door-to-door canvassing engagement because there, people are going to be calling me. They're going to be calling me about this. And again, I know you said you visited some that maybe it's like directly in front of their home, but I would say like there needs to be some, if you know, possible intentional like door-to-door, try to talk to people face-to-face. And that 12 to one, it would also be nice if you could do an evening one so that people can actually participate, right? I'm just thinking about working folks. I don't, you know, they won't be able to participate in the meeting and I doubt that they'll go and view a recording. So like, it would be nice to have also like an evening option for folks.
Yeah, we'll definitely consider that. We did an evening one for Poway Rancho Bernardo and we had a really surprisingly small turnout. And so that's why this time we thought, we'll give this a shot. But it's not one and done. I mean, we could certainly do a second one or even space out occasionally because this project is going to stretch out for a bit, so.
I appreciate, yeah. And just for comparison too, I think like, maybe some, you know, the communities are different, you know, than Poway. We have a lot of working folks that work two jobs and so I think, yeah, having a second workshop in the evening would be great for that flexibility of our workforce and residents.
That's a really good point.
All right, just one more thing, just a comment. I think the cards are wonderful and they're great and they need to go out because a lot of our Spanish-speaking community here in Escondido find it very difficult to go online and then the link is all in English. It doesn't say, or at least here, it doesn't appear that there's anything in Spanish just for the link itself. I'm sure that once they get there, they can see Spanish tabs. But door-to-door would be wonderful, particularly for them because it is going to be very difficult. And a noon meeting for them would be very hard because they do work two jobs. And our community versus Poway is quite different. Escondido from Poway is quite different. And I appreciate the fact that you want to look at, you know, it didn't work there. Maybe it will, a different hour worked better over here. But being the community is so, so different. I would encourage you to provide that opportunity for our community to take advantage of that because this is going to be a major interruption. Not that we don't need it, but it is a major interruption in everyone's lives for a long period of time. So thank you very much.
Just to address the questions about the timeframe for when the traffic control measures will be up. As the contractor progresses with their work and they need a smaller footprint, for example, after all the structure work is in and they'll be doing more work inside the structure, the traffic control measures will reduce and they'll only be put in place on days where they need to be there with the exception of the major work on Harding between East Washington and East Valley Parkway. Those measures will be in place even at night when the contractor is not there just for safety reasons as the excavation will be quite large and we won't be able to trench over it.
So the city manager has many questions about this plan. I appreciate the council's input. We will be communicating with the Water Authority because I have many, many questions about this plan. I will also say the one thing that I am assured of is that we do have the coverage that will not affect our retail operations as we're supplying our customers, right? So when they're talking about outages, they're talking about their supply outages. Our retail customers will receive service during this construction work. But I have lots of questions and I, like you, Councilmember, want to know how this intersection between public transport and school delivery is going to be handled. So I know they've got a lot of jurisdictions to manage in this conversation. And we've had some turnover in our traffic, folks, but I will be following up on this conversation.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, we will go back to our presentation on Prop 36 and I would like to welcome District Attorney Summer Stephan. Thank you for coming and for doing this for us.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor White, Councilmembers and the city manager and the entire Escondido family. I'm Summer Stephan, San Diego County's District Attorney. I have the honor of serving as your DA for all 18 cities in San Diego County and 39 unincorporated areas. And Escondido is one of those very special areas with a concentration of services that are getting built, including the Family Justice Center and everything that has been brought to this area, the Crisis Stabilization Center. the Crisis Stabilization Centers, with the help of Chief Ed Varso and your law enforcement. I wanted to provide a little bit of input and education about Proposition 36, because it is something that impacts law enforcement, public safety, and our office as your people's prosecutor. And there's a lot of information out there on it, and my role is simply to not advocate as I'm here, but to educate, make sure that your questions are answered as people will be looking to you as leaders and might have questions of you. And so what, 900,000 people across California, one of the highest numbers of signature gathering, signed the petition, and the Secretary of State has allowed this proposition, which the Attorney General gave the number 36 to. So it will be on the November ballot as initiative or Proposition 36. And the title is the Homelessness Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act. And the goal of Proposition 36 is to reform some of the unintended consequences of Proposition 47, which passed in 2014. The goal is not to remove all the positive aspects of Proposition 47, but to take out the aspects that have turned out to be, frankly, a nightmare for law enforcement, for retailers, for community. The goal is also to do some things with regard to the fentanyl poisonings, and San Diego County being the number-one entry point for fentanyl for the entire United States, something that we are fighting every day. Forty-nine percent of the illicit fentanyl comes through our ports of entry, to do some things that we have tried to do legislatively with just no zero outcomes. And the families that have lost loved ones to this poisoning are demanding, rightfully so, some action in this area. So here are some of the key aspects of what Proposition 36 will do. The first is that currently, as the law is, an individual can steal under $950 as many times as they wish, a day, or a year, or a month, and the consequence is always a misdemeanor, which, as you know, in law enforcement, that's often a citation, and maybe a book and a release because of the misdemeanor, failures to appear. Law enforcement tells us that individuals sometimes will throw the citation right in front of the police officer. Retailers, small and large, have let us know that they sometimes don't even call police anymore, because there is not a graduated consequence. I personally like to be on the ground. I'm used to that from my 28 years of actually doing cases. So I've been to stores, small and large, talked to the owners, talked to the employees, and there is a feeling of hopelessness. There's a feeling that there's no one that's going to help them, that basically they can, they're on their own. And they lock up things, they look for the latest locks, and, you know, they do all sorts of things, but they're not enough. And the small immigrant business owners, everybody's affected, but you can really see the emotion of something that they built and now is just not sustainable anymore for them. We also know that this affects the lower socioeconomic areas where there are food deserts. So when these big stores or small stores close, it doesn't allow for that community to thrive, because business is your first employers, they're the place, the hub for people. Employees especially, that's what I testified about in Congress, is not just what we forget, the economic impact, but of higher prices that go to consumers, but the impact on the employees who feel absolutely helpless. They are there, they don't know if they can act. If they act, sometimes the employers don't like it, because it can bring liability. If they do act, they subject themselves to the criminal, basically acting like, why are you even looking at me? The law kind of says that this is not criminal, because of the time and time again that the law is not speaking and protecting our businesses and our employees. This has resulted in escalating violence in the stores, security guards getting hurt. We've had cases across the state where there's even been murders as a result of these repeat thieves. So what Proposition 36 will do is it will still allow a first chance of stealing under $950 as a misdemeanor, a second chance, so second conviction as a misdemeanor, a third with the ability to earn a misdemeanor. So you can file a felony or file a misdemeanor, but if you do the treatment, which is a big part of Proposition 36, is addressing, incentivizing, the addressing of the root causes of addiction, of mental health. If you address those, you earn a misdemeanor or even a complete expungement. The fourth time is stays a felony. But unlike some of the rhetoric that says that this is mass incarceration, even on the fourth time, it is not a mandatory state prison sentence. It is still up to looking at all the circumstances, the history, and what is going on with the individual, and how organized or disorganized of a criminal the person is. So that's that part of it. On the possession of hard drugs, like methamphetamine, this is not the marijuana possession, methamphetamine or fentanyl, the individual also gets a misdemeanor the first time, and the second time, the second conviction. On the third time, it is a new class of felony called a treatment-mandated felony. As we know, with the intersection of addiction and homelessness, we know from our medical examiner that folks who are homeless are dying of overdoses at 117 times higher rate than someone who's not homeless. This is a kind of an irrefutable data point to show that we have poverty in our homeless population, we have trauma. We have all those things, but we also have a large addiction issue. But there is no incentive to seek treatment. This allows a judge to order treatment in lieu of incarceration. If the person does the treatment, it goes away completely, not even drops to a misdemeanor. On the fourth time, it's a felony, but also without a mandatory state prison sentence. On the fentanyl end, it does something very, very simple, something that we've been doing for years with DUIs. When you get a DUI, you get an advisement that the next time you commit a DUI, you could be subject to homicide, that DUIs can cause death, a warning and advisal. We've been trying for years to get that, and we have not been able to. Parents have begged the legislature to pass something like this. They haven't, makes no sense. You have an activity that is legal, drinking alcohol, but not driving. You get an advisal. You sell a poisonous substance that killed 77,000 people in the United States, the deadliest substance we've had, and you don't get an advisal as a drug dealer who's been convicted, under the law as a mandatory advisal. It also allows for an additional punishment. If you sell fentanyl and someone dies, you have an additional punishment, which kind of makes sense, because you should be held accountable for your actions. So that is a summary. It proposes using the realignment monies, the community corrections monies, to pay for the enhanced treatment, an addiction treatment that is now going to be incentivized. It proposes some other ways to make sure that there is proper funding. So that is a quick summary of Proposition 36. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time and willingness to come and present on that. My, one of my questions is, who started the effort to launch Prop 36?
I think I would say it's an organic effort. It's coming from the voices of the fentanyl parents, the Alexandria's parents have been influential in it, that have really knocked on doors in the legislature without any, the retailers, you know, crying to prosecutors, to law enforcement. In the end, prosecutors across the state that have seen the, basically just the desperation with their police departments not being able to protect their communities, have tools to have elevated consequences as conduct gets more and more criminal, we kind of got together to write it based on our expertise. The DA's office in San Diego, because we have a huge expertise in fentanyl, we wrote a lot of the segments that dealt with fentanyl. Other offices that had other expertise. So then it was vetted with the community of victims, and retailers, and law enforcement, and it grew from there.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that this is driven by people who have been adversely affected by this issue, because it's clear as day, especially in our community. I've heard the exact same thing you have from businesses in town that no longer call 911 when somebody is stealing from them. It's just not worth the hassle anymore. And saying the exact same thing, as soon as the police show up and write a ticket, they crumple it up and throw it on the ground. And I believe that the proposition has taken the correct approach. I say that from personal experience. I was given an alternative, jail or rehab. And at the time, and you hear this often, at the time, I didn't want help. And it seems like nobody wants help these days. But once it was forced, I took it. I took it, and it worked. And I think that that's the approach we need to be taking. I don't, I personally don't think the proposition goes far enough, but I recognize the politics of the state, and I'm grateful to be able to just take that single step forward. So thank you for doing this, and I will turn the time over to my colleagues.
Thank you for the presentation and for coming to Escondido. Welcome. So any information you can provide on this, like, random number, $950, which is a large number? Is there a reason why that didn't decrease? I'm not really sure why that number.
Right. So everything was looked at. On the third time, there is no number, and the fourth time. The first two times, if you steal under $950, it's a misdemeanor. On the third time, there isn't a number. If you steal and you have two prior convictions, whether misdemeanors or felonies, including like robberies, anything to do with larceny or taking, you can end up with a felony, but you can also earn a misdemeanor through treatment or, you know, just making sure you address the root causes. So there isn't an amount on the third. But on Prop 47, the amount stays forever. So it's, no matter how many times you steal, under $950, it remains a misdemeanor. And sadly, that message was really used and abused by people who took advantage.
Okay, got it. So thanks for clarifying, because I thought it was, you're allowed to steal to three times with up to that max number, but it's just the first time?
The first and second time. The third time, if you steal in any amount, you are eligible to be treated as a felony.
And can you share more, you mentioned something about the DUI. There's also something around DUIs included in this proposition?
No, it's an advisal that we want to give drug dealers of fentanyl and methamphetamine, similar to what we do with DUI cases. And DUI cases, if you're caught and convicted, you get an advisal by the court. The court tells you, you understand, and you've been now to classes, you know that the next time, you could kill somebody. You're lucky you didn't this time. And that advisal, knowing the dangers and actually vast number of deaths that are resulting, to give drug dealers convicted of drug dealing that advisal, the next time you sell drugs, someone dies, you could be held responsible for a homicide, similar to what we do with DUIs.
Okay, got it. Thank you for that information. And then, just kind of curious, and then, you know, this is definitely an issue, and I've witnessed, I've personally witnessed theft. You know, I was at Michael's, and a $1,000 printer was stolen like nothing, and there was a getaway car. I've actually followed the person, which I probably shouldn't have done. But, yeah, but the store didn't want to do anything, and it was over the $950 limit, which I think people have just thrown their hands up and have given up. So it's unfortunate. And then, can you just share more about like, who, you know, what's the opposition saying about this? If you can also share that perspective?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. So I think the opposition, if there is, like, is really trying to paint this as one way, as going back to kind of mass incarceration. That's the kind of theme. But it's, you know, if you actually just, I want people to read it for themselves, you know, because, but it's hard for people to read for themselves these propositions. But if you read it, it's far from that. Most, many think this is not tough enough. You know, it's a balanced approach, still allowing first and second chances, but that is the, just the slogan that we hear. And also trying to paint it as a political thing, one way or another. But if you just look at the list of supporters, there's even in our own county, mayors, Republican and Democrat have supported this. And it is a bipartisan effort, because, you know, victims and store owners and victims of fentanyl poisoning, you know, nothing, is nothing political about it. It's just a devastating impact to these people. And so it has support from social justice people. The Black Chamber supports it, the League of Cities supports it, bipartisan leaders from all across support it. The other thing that I heard is that it's going to take away funding, because Proposition 47 said that they're going to take the money that's saved from people going to jail or prison and put it into schools and programs. The problem is, some of the programs that had money allotted to them, people, they assumed that people would voluntarily sign up to get treatment, but that doesn't happen. It's just very hard with these very deep addictions that sometimes fuel schizophrenia-like symptoms, like schizoaffective disorder with methamphetamine, that look very, very real. It's very hard for people to ask for help themselves. I think the mayor said it well, you need an incentive, you need a court. But right now, our drug courts are half-full, because why would somebody sign up for the hard road of getting treatment when they're deeply addicted if there is no incentive, if there is no consequence? So we used to be a thriving drug court with a 7% recidivism rate, where lives were saved, but now it's not full, because our laws are so weak that they've taken away the incentive to seek treatment. So the money issue, I don't think is real, because we still retain the ability to save the money from the first time, the second time, not incarcerating someone. So there's still plenty of savings. But in fact, we could end up, I don't know the answer, we could end up with less incarceration in that you're stopping the cycle that sometimes then results in violent crime and other crime that sends people to state prison. If you're able to have graduated consequences, you could, in essence, stop that cycle and maybe have less incarceration. We don't know the answer, but there's definitely no data that's going to show it's going to have an effect of huge incarceration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for the presentation, for the information. I agree with the mayor, it's anemic, but it's probably the best that could be created with the political atmosphere and environment that we have in the state of California. I was hoping to hear that this is the first step of several planned steps to obliterate and completely reverse what has occurred with Prop 47. and completely reverse what has occurred with Prop 47. It is very compassionate for the offenders. It's compassionate for those who are on the wrong side of the law. It's hardly compassionate at all for those who are facing the effects of the crimes, of the robberies, of the assaults, of whatever is occurring, of the deaths. And there are still going to be a lot of victims out there, and it's all in the name of making sure that we don't have mass incarceration, because people don't like mass incarceration. It's, again, it's anemic. We appreciate your work and your effort to try to do anything to reverse Prop 47, or to reduce the harmful effects of Prop 47. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, council member. I'm, we considered that, and it definitely, you know, could be tougher. But the idea is that at least stores will still call and police will respond, knowing there is a track. You know, if you complete that one case and the second case, I mean, we have people with 24 cases, then on the third time, you can actually have a booking and a jail and begin that process. So it is still a hard road, but, but, you know, all of the experts coming together from every side, and I think that's why it's polling at 70% and upwards, is that it just hits that, that balanced note. And we'll hope for the best, but I do appreciate your concerns.
Thank you for coming and making the presentation, bringing clarity to something that many times becomes muddled in the discussion. It is, Prop 36 is something that's very welcome. I, being a law enforcement chaplain for over 20 years now, remember clearly the effects of Prop 47. When it came into, to, to be applied in our communities, one of the couple of first times, I remember that we went out, I happened to be on a ride-along, and the person that was, had committed theft, pulled out a calculator and said, "Look, it's less than 950," right? And when I saw that, I realized that that was going to be a major issue and problem for this. So thank you very much for removing some of those negative aspects, still providing some compassion, but providing something that is much more balanced. So just thank you for that. Do we wish that it would have gone farther? Yes. But nonetheless, this is something that is being supported by the community at large. It's bipartisan, and we welcome Prop 36. So thank you very much for all your hard work, and the rest of your colleagues and staff that have been putting in so much time in law enforcement to make this a reality, and we hope that it becomes a reality soon. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Thank you.
I'll keep it short. I just want to echo exactly what's been said. You know, I wish it went further, but I understand. Thank you so much for the presentation. This was extremely informative, and I agree. I think everybody, well, like you said, 70-plus percent people, left, right, center, this is what's been asked of me. This is what people want. This is what they want to see. It's nonpartisan. I think it's going to be very effective when implemented, and I have faith that it will be implemented. And it's not just law enforcement, you know, it's first responders, it's, it's, it's the firefighters, they're asking for the same thing. So I think it has a lot of support, and I appreciate it. I support this, and thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And your chief has been instrumental, Chief Arso, and, and I, I think it'll give him more tools to do what he can for the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, would it be possible for us to go to the?
I was just going to say that. Yep. Mr. McKinney, would you like to come present? We're going to switch it up here. We're going to move to our current business item 11. Hear the presentation and do that item, and then we'll go back to.
Consent calendar?
Mr. McKinney has a plane to catch, so.
Thank you very much for the consideration, Mr. Mayor and council. I apologize for the, for the switch. And I also apologize to my fellow staff members who now have to wait a little bit longer for the consent agenda. So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council members. My name's Chris McKinney. I am Deputy City Manager here in the city of Escondido. I'm here this evening to present to you an update of the RFP process for the California Center for the Arts Escondido, and primarily to present to you corrections for the previously reported five-year expense data, and also to discuss the mayor's option, at his discretion, to appoint an ad hoc committee to review any proposals that are submitted earlier, early next year, sorry. So in September of last year, the city council had held its visioning workshop, and at that workshop, staff were directed by the council to explore options for reducing the structural budget deficit. There were a number of, of options that, that were discussed, but among these was exploring a request for proposals for an operator of the Center for the Arts Escondido. That is, the facility is what I'll generally refer to for the rest of this presentation. In May of this year, staff reported information to the city council, to the public, and as part of the RFP, city expense data specifically related to the facility. This was part of a larger presentation on the draft RFP that, that staff had prepared, and city council reaffirmed its direction to issue the RFP, and that RFP was issued in June of this year. In July, about a month ago, the city council's Center for the Arts Subcommittee met, and at that meeting, representatives of the CCAE Foundation reported errors in the expense information that they had discovered. That was errors in the data that had been presented to you in May. Staff got to work immediately and confirmed those errors, and unfortunately identified even some additional errors and some points of confusion in the data, ways in which the data were presented that, that we felt confused the issue and clouded what the city was spending, what the sources of that funding was. And so our goal was to clear up these errors and misunderstandings and confusion in the data. The errors, which I'm going to go into detail throughout this presentation on what the errors were, but I just want to summarize for now that they are of three primary types. There was significant double counting, that is, the same cost was included in multiple lines of the information you were presented in May. And this, this double counting accounted for the vast majority of the error, and I'm going to go through that double counting and clear that up for you and for the public. A smaller contributor was that some of the data supplied by the departments did not match numbers in the general ledger, that is, kept by our finance department. This is fortunately limited to payments that were made to SDG&E for natural gas and electricity. I'll detail a little bit later what those errors were, but they, they generally fall into the category of different time periods that were looked at that made the data, clouded our ability to, to compare different sets of data, because they were looking at different periods of time. And, and also just some data points that it looked like accounts that should not have been included as CCAE accounts were included in that information. And then finally, I've already alluded to this on the, on the SDG&E information, but there were a few other instances where we were comparing different time periods. That is, using a six-year average rather than a five-year average, or a fiscal year and calendar year in the same batch of data, which really clouded what the data meant. And we made an effort to look at consistent time periods for all the data. This is just a, a summary of the corrections. Again, I'm going to go into more detail later in the presentation. But the overall city expense that was reported to you in May was about $4.5 million. The new numbers, the new corrected numbers show that actual expense to be about $2.9 million, and some of that is not general fund expense, and I'm going to detail for you later what that is. So that's a reduction of about $1.6 million. I want to be clear, the $2.9 million does not include foundation revenue and expenses, except where I'm about to note an exception to that. But in general, you know, the foundation's revenues and expenses are, are significant and not included. This is city expense that I'm trying to present to you this evening. Again, as I've alluded, most of that error is because of double counting, and some of the costs that was reported in May as city expense was actually expensed by the center's foundation, specifically for security and a portion of the special liability insurance. That totaled about $121,000, a relatively small percentage of the total, but still significant enough that it should be called out. And then finally, SDG&E makes annual payments to the city via a development agreement for the Palomar Energy Facility. That's a 20-year development agreement. And they make a payment of $200,000 annually. Those payments will end next year. That's the last payment. But that money is specifically called out in the development agreement as, as being for operation of the Center for the Arts. That money had been previously reported as a public works expense. That is a, a general fund expense. That money is being spent on the center, but the source of that money is not the general fund. It is the, it is this development agreement and payments from SDG.
And, and the development agreement language specifically says it's money to support the Center for the Arts. It does not count, call out the foundation. It has been traditionally given to the foundation for operating procedures, but there is nothing in the agreement with the city that says that it has to do directly with operations. It actually is to support, it could be, the council could have directed at any point in time a different way to invest those. They had to be invested at the center. It did not require it to be retransferred in the agreement to operations at the facility.
And the specific language from the development agreement that the city manager just referenced is, is in your staff report. I'm not going to present it to you here, but you can see that language. I think it's in Table I of, of the staff report. I also want to point out that the numbers, the corrected numbers that will, will be presented to you were provided and/or reviewed by our finance department. And I also want to point out that there's still work to be done in the RFP. There's some information about CIP for replacement of, of equipment, and also a number of deferred maintenance projects that need to be performed. We've, in the time since the RFP was issued, there have been some additional projects that have come up that we need to update, and some of the estimated costs of those CIP projects has grown a little bit stale with the passage of time. And so we will, we are working now to update that, but those updates are not ready to present to you this evening. We expect that to be done within the next six weeks, at which point it will be updated on the city's website with the RFP and also provided to the city council. So now let's dig into the data. This table and the table on the next slide are a table directly from the staff report that was published with the agenda for this item. I want to just orient you to the data so you know what you're looking at, and then I'll, I'll go kind of line by line as necessary to, to point out where the errors were made and what corrections have been, have been made to that data. But as you can see, there's a number of expense categories. The reference tables, reference tables that were published in the staff report. And the columns, as the headers imply, the first column is the information that was reported to you and to the public in May. The next column is the difference. That is how that information is being corrected. Most of the numbers are negative, but you can see there are a few positive ones. And then the, the final three columns, under the common header, "Confirmed by Finance", are paid by the city. That is a direct general fund expense by the city. Paid by the CCAE, which I really should have put paid by the CCAE Foundation, to be clear, but that's a foundation expense. And then other allocations, there are none on this particular table, but on the next table, you can see the SDG&E Community Benefit Payment. That's the development agreement payment that I mentioned earlier. That's included in that line, because that, as I said earlier, is not a general fund expense. That's money provided by SDG&E. And then the bottom-line totals. I'm going to dig into all these numbers, with the exception of Row G, the management fee to the operator, because that was simply the agreed-upon management fee paid to the operator. There was no error or misreporting of that number. And also, Table C, the Information, Technology and Systems line, that number, we believe, is correct as presented in May. So first, let's start with utilities. I, I already mentioned earlier that the SDG&E numbers did not match those in the general ledger. That resulted in a correction of about $62,000 downward from $898,000 to about $835,000. Water and wastewater, there's a fairly small correction made there. It's about $1,500. And that's simply one of these cases where we had been using a six-year window, but to be consistent with the data, all of the other data, we shifted to a five-year window. And so removing that one year of data led to a small reduction in that average. One, one thing that I neglected to point about, a point out about the SDG&E data, that's five-year data, which included the COVID year, and at which point, everything was shut down. The, the utility costs that year were significantly lower than average, only about half a million dollars. We are going to present, in the data that's presented to the RFP respondents and to the public, not only the average of the last five years, but also specifically the last two years of data. Because given rising utility costs and, and the fact that, you know, we're out of COVID thankfully, those numbers are much higher. They are well over a million dollars, approaching $1.2 million annually. So we want to make sure that respondents are aware of that, and also that, that you are aware that, that that average is suppressed somewhat by the five-year average. Next is special liability insurance. The number that was reported to you in May was the correct number for the cost of that special liability insurance. The clarification that needs to be made about that data is that it did not call out that, that this had been historically shared by the city and the foundation, about 75% city, 25% foundation. We now reflect that split. I should make it clear that any future respondent to the, the RFP, they would, they would need to expect that they are going to be paying the entire cost of that special liability insurance. So that's still about $150,000 of cost or more that they will need to account for. And in fact, under the current management agreement, that, the one-year management agreement that's in effect now with the foundation, they are already paying 100% of that cost. So that is now all on the foundation and not on the general fund. Now we come to public works, maintenance, and repairs and facility contracts. This is where the majority of the errors were, and I want to talk a little bit about the double counting. The management fee, which we've already discussed, the utilities, I already presented to you, the special liability insurance, facility contracts, which I'm going to talk about in a moment, and the SDG&E Community Benefit Payment. All of those items were included, well, with the exception of SDG&E Community Benefit, were included not only in a distinct line item, but they were also included in this public works line item. So that's where the double counting occurred. As you can see, that is a large difference, decreasing that particular line from about $2.5 million to $0.8 million. Facility contracts had been broken out previously, but since that's managed by the public works, our, our public works department, the city's public works department, that has been rolled back into Line E. So that's why now you have a total cost to the general fund for public works activities at the Center for the Arts of about $825,000. Another change that was made in how this data was calculated is that the numbers have been updated to reflect expenses for the full fiscal year '24. When it was presented to you in May, at that point, we only had data through January. And so now that the, the fiscal year is complete and we have those numbers, that's another way in which, not really a correction of an error, but another way in which time has allowed us to, to update those numbers. And then finally, Row H shows the SDG&E Community Benefit Payment that I've already mentioned several times, so I won't go into it more unless you want. And then finally, security and, security costs, those had not been included previously in the RFP, but that is about an $82,000 cost. Presently, that cost is borne by the foundation. It is not a general fund expense. That's why it's in the paid by the CCAE Foundation column. That's why it's in the paid by the CCAE Foundation column. And finally, the bottom line, as you can see, what was reported in May was about a $4.5 million expense. That's been reduced by $1.6 million. Of the remaining $2.9 million expense, about 2.6 of that is a direct city expense. About $121,000 is a foundation expense. And I want to be clear, that $121,000 is simply the foundation expenses that had been reported to you earlier as a, as a city expense. It in no way represents what the foundation's expenditures are at the Center for the Arts. And then finally, the community benefit payment. Just to review the timeline for the RFP process, we are now in the tour and questioning phase. As you can see, in late August and September, we have a deadline for proposals of June 9th. And that leads us to the staff recommendation.
I think, I think you meant January 9th.
What did I say? Oh, I did mean January 9th. As it, as it clearly says there, if I could read correctly, January 9th, 2025, is the due date for proposals. Thank you. And then finally, the staff recommendation is that you receive and file this report. You don't need to take a vote on this report, but rest assured that this updated information will be posted to the city's website for all potential RFP respondents, and it is included in the staff report attached to the agenda for this meeting, so that it's available to the public. And staff also requests that the mayor, at his discretion, of course, nominate two city council members to serve on an ad hoc city council subcommittee. The purpose of that subcommittee will be to review all the RFP responses that we receive in January, along with staff, and to make a recommendation to the full city council regarding the selection. With that, I am available for your questions and comments.
I just have one question real quick. The $200,000 expense from, was it SDG&E? That goes away in January, so then will that become a general fund expense?
So that will depend on what is proposed in an RFP. I mean, it, a respondent could account for that and say, we will, we will raise revenue. We've, so, could be, maybe not.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one public comment on this item.
Oh, we'll go ahead to public comment.
Yeah.
I would just say, I will volunteer to be on that committee in January, so.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a joke.
Oh, yeah, you won't be here.
Yeah, I won't be here.
Joe Rowley.
I'm a little bit slow, sorry.
Mayor White, council members. I'm actually here for a different agenda item, but it just so happens that I was the developer of the Palomar Energy Project when I was at Sempra U.S. Gas and Power. And I negotiated that $200,000 payment to the Center for the Arts with Jeff App when he was city attorney. And everything I've heard regarding the characterization of that is completely accurate. It's just hard to believe that 20 years has gone by. It was intended to be $4 million spread over that period of time, which was 200,000 per year. I just have a suggestion that, now maybe you've tried this already, but I would definitely go back to SDG&E, point out the hole in the, in the, in the center's budget that the loss of those funds would create, and see if they would do some level of funding more like in perpetuity, rather than just, you know, with a 20-year sunset on it, or even with the sunset, but anything's better than nothing. If you were turned down, I would suggest going to Sempra. And the project actually originated with, not with SDG&E, but with rather, at the time, Sempra Energy Resources, which became Sempra U.S. Gas and Power. And when we sold the project to SDG&E, they inherited that obligation. That's the reason why so many comes from SDG&E. But originally, the obligation was from Sempra U.S. Gas and Power. So nothing ventured, nothing lost. I would give it a shot. If there's anything I can do to help in that regard, you know, let me know. Thank you.
No further public on this item?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you. So I am one of the members of the subcommittee. And, well, first off, thank you, Chris. I appreciate the presentation. And when this came to our attention, we took it very seriously. I know I spoke with our staff immediately, and I just want to, I just want to thank the staff, everybody on the staff, for how seriously, how quickly you acted on it and, and the follow-up presentation and just working, just working collectively to make sure that things were corrected and done right by the, well, by the city, because I know that it was a big concern for the Center of the Arts and, you know, they were really, really concerned about it. So I think we acted appropriately, and I just want to thank you for the work that you put into it, everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
All right. Couple of things, just to reiterate what you've already said, some of them. One of the comments that I received was that, why isn't it that these updated numbers are not reflected on the website already? All right? So can you answer that?
Well, we were working on these numbers through Wednesday of last week. The agenda was published on Thursday, I believe, maybe Friday. And so my intent at least was that we would present this to the city council, receive your comments, in case your comments resulted in other ways that we could clarify the data, that would give us an opportunity then to do that and post the data. But in the absence of any comments from you about further clarification that you need, I would, I would expect that this information would be posted immediately.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Well, and additionally, because there is a process underway, we wanted to make sure, just like when we initiated the process, we informed the entire public about the changes and why the changes took place before uploading those changes in this solicitation process.
Yeah, thank you very much. I was, I was aware of that, but I needed to make sure that it got onto the record to make sure that that question was answered. The, these numbers, the corrected numbers, have they been provided to the California Center for the Arts Foundation now and the leadership?
They received, well, they, we, we met with them and discussed a draft of the numbers because we wanted to, I wanted to be sure that we understood all of the errors that they had found. I was not present, unfortunately, when they met with the subcommittee. And then they got these along with the rest of the public when the agenda was published on Thursday.
Okay, so they have received them. Thank you for that.
I assume, sorry. To be clear, I assume they have. I assume they looked at the, at the staff report.
Okay. And thank you for the transparency to make sure that we, as a city, take our, the facts that we put out there, that they're important and they should be accurate. And this time, they weren't. And how you've come before us and in the public and open forum to explain to us the mistake that has happened. So thank you very much. I believe that that is transparency on part of the staff and the city that has been wonderful to clarify that. The other, and the last thing that I have is, one of the comments that I received was, was there any, does the finance committee have, I'm sorry, does the finance department, does the city have evidence to back up the numbers that they, that they're presenting now?
Yes, we do. And if you, if I go back, so these two slides are, together, they are a table that was in the staff report. And each of those lettered reference tables has a, that refers to a different table that's also in the staff report. And there you can find backup that we published. And then if someone really wanted to dig, because, you know, we chose not to publish every single number, but, but those numbers are available to our finance department for anyone who wanted to view them.
So it's available for anybody who would like to view them?
It's all public information.
Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes my, my questions.
Questions? No questions? Okay. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Now, do we need, do I need to add an agenda item to appoint two council members, or can we just do that now?
You, you will need to add that agenda item, and we can, we can move forward from there.
Okay.
It has, it has been.
It is agendaized, so.
It's, it's your, it's your call to either do it tonight, you can do it at a future meeting.
How soon can we do it, other than tonight?
The next meeting would be September 11th.
Let's do it September 11th.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Drive safe.
And thank you for the consideration. I really appreciate it.
Now we will go on to our report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. City council heard several matters in closed session this evening. All council members were present. The council approved the following settlements by a vote of five to zero. In the matters of Thomas Pugh versus City of Escondido, both cases were approved for settlement in the total amount of $25,000. In John Taylor versus City of Escondido, three matters were approved for settlement for a total amount of $82,455. In Julio Lopez versus City of Escondido, the matter was settled for a total amount of Nothing further to public report at this time.
Do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Yes, one, and that is going to be Jim Nelson.
My name is Jim Nelson. I live up near Resurrection Church in Conway Elementary School. I'm glad I heard that report about the water project, because I wasn't aware of that one. I live not too far from there. My concern with the stop signs and stoplights that have gone up in the city in the last 10 years, especially the two stop signs on Sheridan Road by Resurrection Church. Do you know where Sheridan Road is? It's the road that, west end of it has a stoplight on Broadway, right in front of Escondido High School. And the east end is up, I think it's called Vista Verde Way. I used to get, go to work, I'd get on Sheridan Road, Sheridan Avenue. First stop sign I hit was a stop sign at Broadway, or Ash Street. It was a stop sign at Ash Street, I'd make a left on Ash, go down to El Nordi, make a right turn in El Nordi. The next stop sign, stoplight I hit was at Broadway. Now, I don't go to work anymore, but I hit a stop sign at Conway Drive, right by Resurrection Church. A stop light now at Sheridan Road and Ash with a protected green arrow. And now there's a stoplight at FIG, which I don't know why these things went in. My request would be is that when you put the stoplight at FIG, you drove me off of El Nordi Parkway. I take Sheridan Road now, go up to FIG, and go down FIG to the El Nordi Parkway. And again, I make a right turn, make a left turn on another side street, and that's the way I get to the freeways. You probably want me on El Nordi Parkway and Center City Parkway to get to the freeways, to get out of town. But, you know, it's, most of the time, for me, it's faster to take surface streets now. And I don't think you guys really want me to do that. I think you want me on the arterial roads. Another, so if you can, and the, the stop sign at Conway and Sheridan, Sheridan is not a busy road, but it's much busier than Conway at most hours of the day. And I don't, we didn't used to have a stop sign there. We just went on our way. And the traffic on Conway might have to wait for two or three cars to go by before they can make their left or right-hand turn. It wasn't that big a deal. But now we have, everybody has to stop at that intersection. I don't know what the reason was for that. You know, it went in about 10 years ago, and I figured something must have changed to necessitate, necessitate the stop signs going in, but I haven't seen anything. The next point I really want to make is Broadway and 78. There's another stoplight up to the north of that intersection, about 50 feet or 20 yards or so. Traffic coming off of 78 going northbound on Broadway, traffic on Broadway going northbound, they'll get the green light at the intersection, and they have to stop again 20 yards further on. I've come down, well, I don't know, I think it's called Lincoln at that point now, and I see traffic blocking the intersection. It's just stopped because the stoplight.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
Yeah, I see that. But anyway, do you just, that would, that's an easy fix. It's a timing issue.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Sir, can you provide your contact information to our clerk so we can be in touch, please? Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items one through 10 are on consent. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull from consent?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item number eight and nine.
Items one through seven and 10 are on consent, and I move to approve items one through seven and 10. And I have a second. Please open the voting.
Voting is open.
That takes us to item eight.
Motion approved, five to zero.
No, you're good. Thank you.
Great, yes. Item number is award consulting agreement for design of the West Side Park Skate Spot Project. I don't know if there was a presentation, but just wanted to see if, if there was staff here that could just share maybe timeline or some information. This is something that's very popular in the community, so even if it's not a formal presentation, just maybe share, like, you know, a timeline, any information you can provide for the public. And I apologize, because you didn't get a heads up about this, so whatever you can provide, it could be one minute, two. It's just for the public watching, because this is something that we've mentioned that we would be doing, but I'm, you know, a timeline, you know, any, any other information you can provide for the public would be appreciated.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Shabel, city engineer, and this is Michael Tully, project manager for this project.
Is that mic?
If you hit that, if you hit the button on the microphone at the base, it'll turn it on.
Am I on now?
Yes.
Yes, there will be three public outreach, community meetings, and all three of them will be in the evening, and all three will have surveys associated with them in English and Spanish. The first meeting will be a listening session, followed by a hands-on experience where members of the community will be actually drawing out some of their wishes and as well as listing some of their wishes for the park. And then that will be followed by the second meeting, which will be the final concept, 30% schematic design. That will be from the first meeting, all, from all their wishes. They will be able to provide their feedback at that time as well, again, online. And then followed by a third community outreach meeting, which will be a 3D rendering of the actual project, sort of getting into the nuts and bolts. And at that time, they will also be able to provide their feedback for the project.
Thank you. And then can you, this is the same company, right, that, that we contracted with for the other one? So that's great, and you all did a great job with outreach on that. So three meetings, and one includes a listening session. And what's the timeline for the, timeline for the beginning of the first listening session to when, you know, the last meeting takes place? What's the timeline for that?
So the timeline for the first meeting, we're anticipating that to be within about two months from when we, after we signed the contract. And then the, the last public outreach meeting, we anticipate to be about somewhere in the ballpark of three months after we get the first initial design back.
Great, thank you so much. Yeah, I just wanted to give some more information, and I know this is something that has been asked about for years, and so, because I know people will have questions, I wanted them to be able to reference and have the information. So that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to approve it?
I'll move to approve. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five to zero.
And now item nine. Are you just registering a?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just being, it's because of second reading, so I'm just registering my same vote. So I'm ready, I'll make a, I'll move to, to vote on this, and I'll be registering a no vote.
Council member Garcia?
Yes, I just, I have a, as I, after we, we approved this in the first reading, I received an email, and it brought up an interesting issue that we hadn't considered. So I'm not sure how to go about this. Just ask staff at some point to come back with an idea of when we, when there's a visitor that comes to visit you, and they have an RV, you know, how do we deal with that, since we're pretty much no RV parking in the street, right? So I don't know if this would be the, the moment to talk about this, or should I agenda this? the moment to talk about this, or should I agendaize for later, or?
Let, let, let's, let's look at that issue, I, I hear the issue, we'll, we'll bring back a report and council can decide what they want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I also add on to that? Yeah, I think we probably spoke to the same group or people. That was the issue, then also asking if there's ways to get like a permit, like a public street permit, that.
So the permit, the permit's a deeper issue, and so, that, that is not a contemplated, that would be a huge workload. Um, so that is not complicated, I, I understand the question, we can come back, but right now, that would reopen the entire.
Understood.
Under the entire process.
And, and then, what, you, you have to go into the definition of what's a friend visiting from out of town, and for how long, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that was all discussed previously.
I, we'll look at that, but I, I, I have a feeling that, that some of this may reopen the entire intent of the, of the ordinance.
Okay, I move to approve item nine. I have a second, please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, four to one, Martinez, no.
Alright, moving on to item 12, the Escondido Creek Trail Multi-Use Path Project. The time is yours.
Great, well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I am Deputy City Manager Joanna Axelrod, and I'm joined tonight by City Engineer Jonathan Schabel. We're here tonight to celebrate the next milestone in the Escondido Creek Trail Project. And to ask you to please approve the award of the Escondido Creek Trail Construction Bid, and also the award of a consulting agreement for construction project management services. We wanted to start off by reminding you of the project as a whole, and then we'll dive into, uh, the topic at hand for tonight. So many communities have taken their utility corridors and revitalized them into true community assets. And that's what we're hoping to accomplish with this project. When the creek was channelized decades ago, the neighboring developments grew up oriented away from the channel. And we're investing in this infrastructure to make this corridor a more beautiful, inviting, and safe space. And we're hoping that business owners and residents will start to turn toward the Creek Trail, because there are so many opportunities for the community to take ownership, and invest their time and attention to ensuring that it stays that way. Our goals with this project are to beautify the space, and increase usage to bring more positive activity to the trail. Increase access, so more people can utilize the trail to get to and from their homes, workplaces, schools, and to use it for recreational activities. To encourage safe and healthy lifestyles, and to build more partnerships with local businesses, schools, artists, and nonprofits, to keep growing and improving this community asset. Extensive community engagement has been done around improving the Creek Trail since back in 2010, when the master plan was originally developed. Over the years, the community's needs and wants have been revalidated multiple times, but have remained very consistent in their focus on bringing natural elements to the trail through California-friendly and native landscaping, and replacing chain link fencing with a more park-like design. Since the trees and plants will be small when they're first installed, it'll take some time for them to grow into the beautiful landscaping that we see in the renderings. But watching that take shape will be a part of the fun of seeing the seminity grow and change over the years. Beautifying the trail with inclusion of artistic and educational elements that celebrate our community, culture, and biodiversity. Those opportunities won't end with this project, however. We're getting the ball rolling, but our hope is that the community will continue to invest in murals, art, and activities throughout the entire length of the corridor. Improving safety by separating wheeled users from pedestrians whenever possible, and adding linear footage of DG Trail that doesn't currently exist. Improving the surface of the trail for a smoother, safer traveling experience, adding more lighting, installing pedestrian crossings where the trail intersects local roads, and creating more places to get on and off the trail. And finally, providing better access to recreational opportunities by bringing fitness stations, play areas, and water bottle filling stations directly to the trail, but also by increasing access so that residents can utilize the trail to get to recreational hubs like Washington Park. This map shows the full reach of the Creek Corridor through the city, from Citricato Parkway, where the new bridge has officially been opened, to beyond Citrus, where it passes near El Cabeo Park. As you can see, the bulk of the improvements are in the Broadway to Midway area, which is where the fitness stations, water bottle filling stations, play equipment, shade structures, and artistic elements are concentrated. On the western end, the improvements will focus more on resurfacing and striping the trail, replacing fencing, and adding signage. This is the current project timeline, as you can see, we're about a month behind schedule, as we anticipated bringing the construction bid award and construction management agreement to council for approval in July, but your action tonight will get us right back on track. With, we are hoping to end construction in fall of September 2025.
On June 13th of this year, two sealed bids were received in response to the request for construction bids for the project. The total bid amounts are shown on this slide. Staff evaluated the bids and determined that Tribe, Tribe Group Construction and Development had the lowest responsive and responsible bid. Their bid was within 8% of the engineer's estimate. Staff's recommendation is to award the construction contract to Tribe, Tribe Group Construction and Development, Inc., for construction of the Creek Trail improvements from Citricato to Midway. Also, in regards to construction management, um, we received one response for our request, from our request for proposals. TY Lin International is a highly qualified global engineering firm who will provide construction management, inspection, and environmental services for the project. If approved tonight, TY Lin will manage all aspects of construction, including prioritizing public safety, coordination of inspection and testing of materials, coordination of new electrical points of service with SDGNE, environmental, environmental monitoring, review of submittals, and contractor negotiations. TY Lin offers a full-time, experienced resident engineer who previously worked with the city as part of the construction management team for the Citricato Parkway Extension Project. Staff recommends that the city council take the following actions, adopt resolution number 2024-107, authorizing a public improvement agreement with Tribe Group Construction, and adopt resolution number 2024-108, authorizing a consulting agreement with TY Lin International. That concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, do we have any public comments on this item?
None.
On this particular item? Oh, sure, oh, yes, oh, please, yes.
Hi, councilmembers and Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Um, I, I actually, I'm on the board of the Escondido Creek Conservancy, and, uh, we just wanted to weigh in and, uh, in, in favor of this. We, we support it, and it, it meets the mission of the Conservancy as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I really appreciate seeing lighting in some of those sections added. Um, occasionally, I like to walk home from city council meetings, and I live on Midway, and there's a couple of sections where it's pretty scary. And I know most people aren't walking the Creek Trail at 8:30 or 9 o'clock, but, uh, in case you are, yeah, it is quite scary in some spots. So, uh, looking forward to that, looking forward to this whole thing being done and improved for the community, and thank you.
Just a question, in regards to the, the illustration, um, which looks great. It shows the, the large butterflies that are, that are painted on there. So, for those who are familiar with it, the great majority of, of the trail right now, of, of the, of, excuse me, of the, the channel, is nothing more than graffiti that's been painted over. So, I don't know if this is just an illustration, or if there's a proposal to add something on there, but if, if you do, is, how's it going to be, become graffiti-proof?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, and it's actually a really interesting story, because our design consultant, RRM Design Group, created this rendering as something that could be amazing, as a beautiful idea for what could be done. And that really caught wind in the community, and through the partnership that we have, the amazing staff and community services that oversee our public art program, they've been working with the Escondido Community Foundation, who are funding grants throughout the city of Escondido. And, um, there is an artist who has been awarded, or is in the process of being awarded, a grant to actually paint the channel. So this vision that started out as a designer's amazing concept for what could be, is actually going to come to fruition. So they're working very closely with the city, many city departments, public works included, our environmental compliance department, to ensure that they're following all of the necessary permitting, water capture, and also graffiti-proofing, using the right materials, et cetera. And they, part of the, um, anytime a city, uh, a mural is constructed on city property or on city right-of-way, there is a maintenance agreement between the artist and the city, so they will be responsible for maintaining it, should it get graffiti-ed for a term of five years.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And also, just, you didn't ask, but since it's also in this rendering, um, that building is Neighborhood Healthcare, one of Neighborhood Healthcare's facilities. And they are a named partner in our Prop 68 grant. And, um, as a named partner, one of the things they committed to was providing their building as a canvas. So that's another piece of this project, it may not be those birds, but there will be a beautiful mural that is using that entire building as the canvas. So there's going to be so many opportunities for amazing art along the trail.
I was hoping that they would allow a climbing wall instructed there, but probably not.
Maybe in the future.
Right, and, um, so having ridden, uh, the trail on bicycle, and, uh, definitely paving and, and striping, great. Thank you so much for that lighting, uh, is, is an issue. Signage, an issue, I've already brought that up in the past. But one of the great things that I just heard right now is, uh, sections where we'll separate those walking pedestrians and those on bicycle. So thank you for that, this is, uh, well thought out, thought out, I've seen community members so excited about what's going to happen, and, um, I am too, thank you.
Thank you for the information, um, quick question on the, um, at one point of another update before this one, there was, um, some beautiful photos of like, um, basket weaving design of the Kumii, as well as, um, a community garden. Is that still in the plan, and is that part of like this timeline?
Yeah, the basket weave pattern is going to be part of the gateway entrance at Date Street. So we worked with, um, all of the tribes that we interface with in this local area to contribute ideas for the patterns. They all have, obviously, cultural significance, so we're re-engaging with them to help us write the, um, interpretive signage that will go with that, and we're hopeful that they'll be part of the ceremony and, um, grand opening celebrations as well, which will be really amazing. For, in terms of the community garden, there is a space carved out for a community garden. Um, that project has taken a pause, uh, for the time being, because we are still looking for an operator of that community garden. But we're working very closely with Economic Development, who's kind of spearheading, um, the work that we're doing around community gardens and the operators that we work with. So we're hopeful that that space will be taken over by an operator, who will then, um, engage with the local community to prioritize who those plots will go to and be, be maintained by.
Great, do you know approximately the size of that offhand? If not, that's fine.
I don't offhand, but I could definitely get you that information after the meeting.
Okay, and I really, I do love the, um, the painting on the, on the, um, creek. Um, and I know that they now have like anti-graffiti paint, and, um, in different communities that I have visited, they have like river walks, like in Detroit, just, um, in Indianapolis, like, so it's just really exciting to see this. And, um, yeah, I know the community's been asking for a long time, and it's taken years, but it's amazing what, what it's going to turn into. So I'm really excited and happy to support this tonight.
Thank you for the presentation, this is exciting, thank you again.
Okay, uh, anybody else?
Mayor, if I could, just, I just wanted to acknowledge, um, the Escondido Creek Conservancy as well. It was not a plant, I didn't know he was going to be here, but they also are a named partner on our Prop 68 grant. So I just really appreciate the comments that you made. Um, they also have committed to doing volunteer events, and bringing students, and helping with the engagement around, um, our youth in the community. So I just really wanted to acknowledge the Escondido Creek Conservancy as well, for the role that they've played in this project.
Thank you. I will go ahead and move to approve item number 12, I would ask for a second, it's been seconded, please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you again. This takes us to item 13, which is a resolution I asked to bring forth, um, on battery energy storage system projects in and adjacent to the city of Escondido. And this came about because of a project being proposed just outside of, uh, Escondido proper. And my initial thoughts were that this didn't really have anything to do with the Escondido City Council, so, um, I did not plan on bringing a resolution forth. And then, a fire happened in Oti, and I thought, I better start paying a little bit more attention to this, before the next one comes to, at the city of Escondido. And I want to make a couple of things clear first, uh, we're absolutely mindful of the need for dependable and sustainable energy. I fully recognize that this is the direction the state of California is headed. Um, we're not looking to oppose that direction by any state, um, of the imagination. And I, I want to make clear, we're not opposed to battery energy storage, as evidenced by a city council vote on December 6, 2023, which I believe happened without question or a single concern. Um, and, and a big part of that was, it was located in a reasonable location. I don't believe that this one in particular is located in a reasonable location. Uh, not only that, but it does not provide any sort of economic benefit to the city of Escondido, no jobs, no tax revenue. Um, and with that being said, I just want to read a couple of paragraphs from the resolution, I think it states my point, uh, better than, than what I could say right here. So, uh, "Battery energy storage products do not bring realistic economic benefits to the city, including jobs, new, new local tax revenue, and instead may burden the city with health and safety risks. Long-term static land use, negative impact on existing residential land values, disincentivizing employers and businesses from locating into the area and creating lower-than-optimal local sales and ad valorem tax opportunities." Uh, "The city is located in an area in San Diego County subject to severe and destructive wildfires, and as such, its residents have been required to undertake extensive fire safety efforts at their homes, and have experienced issues such as ever-increasing home insurance premiums or non-renewals of existing policies due to the potential of fires. And one health and safety, one reasonable health and safety concern related to battery energy storage products is the potential for the ignition of fires, explosions, and thermal runaways, which again, has just happened in the city of Oti, uh, and took weeks in order to get under control." Again, I want to state, we are not opposed to battery energy storage, uh, we approved one without, without question, without concern. They need to be reasonably located, but furthermore, I think the biggest issue with this one is the lack of respect for the residents who are already there, and in particular, one resident who's going to have an eight-foot wall on, located around three sides of their home. And I, I, I question whether or not the, um, proponents of the project would be willing to live in that same type of situation. So with that being said, uh, I'm assuming there's a couple of public comments, we'll go ahead and move to public comments, and then I'll open it up to the rest of the council for discussion.
Yes, our first speaker is Andrew McSparren. And as Mr. McSparren makes his way up, we did receive online comments, 25 in support of the resolution, two in opposition, six letters against the Segura Battery Facility, and one letter supporting the battery facility, those were submitted prior to the resolution being drafted. Mr. McSparren?
My name is Andrew McSparren. I've been a resident of Eden Valley for 43 years, almost 44 years now. Eden Valley is located, actually, my property is sharing a property line with the proposed BES facility. It's, um, I'm about 300 or so feet outside of the city of Escondido. I want to thank the city of Escondido, Mayor Dane White, and the members of the city council for considering this resolution, and I encourage you to adopt it in full. From my patio, I used to look down on a most beautiful equestrian facility. Now I look down on essentially a ghost town. There's several boarded-up homes, there are some, the, um, semblance of, uh, past remnants of horse facilities, stables, corrals, that are now waiting to be turned into a ticking time bomb, that at some point will explode and set fire to the homes that surround that facility on all four sides, while spewing toxic gases throughout the area and the nearby Palomar Hospital complex. The danger of BES facilities cannot be underestimated. We've had two fires in Valley Center from BES units. As the mayor mentioned, the Oti Mesa Fire, which took 17 days to, um, uh, extinguish, and the businesses were under evacuation orders that entire time, as would residents be in this particular. particular facility. A single BES facility in Germany has reported three fire incidents in 2024 alone. There were 10 reported BES fires throughout the world in 2023. These were only the reported ones, and we believe that there were many more than that that went unreported. We realize the need for clean energy and the ability to store that energy. I'm not against BES systems either, that are properly placed away from homes, schools, hospitals, and other sensitive receptors, not in high-fire-prone areas, not in areas where evacuation is impossible, where residents' only exit is through the two parts of a BES facility that they would have to drive down the middle of, and then onto two narrow lanes of Country Club Drive. I can't encourage you strongly enough to adopt this resolution against the Seguro project, to not allow city property to be used for power easements for that project, and to adopt a moratorium against BES facilities until proper codes for placement and construction away from residential and sensitive areas can be established. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Kendra Correa.
Hi, Kendra Correa, resident of Escondido. I'm here enthusiastically voicing my approval for Resolution 2024-113. Escondido embraced the installation of a 30-megawatt BES back in 2017. At the time, it was the largest in the world. Escondido has continued its commitment to new energy sources as a member of the Clean Energy Alliance and meeting the goals of the Climate Action Plan. Thank you for considering this resolution and hopefully a moratorium, as it is also progressive. It will allow Escondido to gain a firm governing hand on BES facilities and can keep its citizens safe while continuing to embrace clean energy resources. As California aggressively strives towards being carbon neutral, there's little to no regulations from the state towards BES facilities. Now, there's a land grab by energy corporations that have converged on the state to stake their claim. Even as we witnessed the extreme dangers of BES, corporations are trying to normalize placing BES in close proximity to schools and in the middle of residential areas and near vital services such as hospitals. Thus why moratoriums leading to BES regulations are imperative. Toxic fumes, days to weeks of evacuations, extensive negative impacts can never be normalized in residential areas. The proposed BES facility, Seguro, is the perfect example of the industry's blatant disregard for public safety. The name Seguro, which means "safe," is ironic. It's anything but. It's a reckless venture by AES Corporation in the California energy gold rush. AES has proposed a battery container placement 22 feet from residents' backyards. The BES plan actually has five residents that have to drive through the middle of this facility to get to their homes. Palomar Hospital is downwind and in a quarter-mile evacuation zone. The impact of a thermal runaway event would cripple the hospital and our only trauma center in North County for days. The brazen reckless placement of this BES is exactly why moratoriums are being voted in by local governments and across the US and across in the world. Our local leaders are taking control to create task forces to establish ordinances, regulations, frame a rigorous application process, and vet the corporations and their technologies they will be using to ensure our safety. On that note, I would like to urge the council to please deny any easement on Escondido property to be used by AES for any aspect of the proposed Seguro BES. This is one definitive step you can take towards not enabling AES to inflict the health and safety emergency at hand for Eden Valley residents and Palomar Hospital. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Andrew Lederman.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Lederman, and I live on Sorry Lane in Eden Valley, an unincorporated community within the Escondido sphere of influence. Our home is across the street from the Escondido city limits. Unfortunately, we also share a property line with the proposed Seguro battery energy system. Our livestock barn is about 50 yards, 50 feet from the closest proposed battery container that would have many thousands of lithium-ion cells that are prone to thermal runaway and can emit deadly fumes when ignited either by a malfunction in one of the batteries or as I was told of a wildfire, which we experience frequently in this area. It is an absolute travesty that a loophole in the county zoning laws and a lack of BES-specific regulations allowed the applicant, AES, a very large for-profit corporation with a less-than-stellar environmental record, to apply to build an enormous utility-scale BES consisting of millions of lithium-ion batteries on a 22-acre site surrounded on all four sides by homes in a high wildfire-risk area. Due to its proposed location, residents of the city of Escondido, as well as Palomar Hospital, would also be in the danger zone. Concerned by recent fires at two of the three BES operating in unincorporated areas, the county of San Diego finally recognized the absurdity of the current lack of BES regulations and the danger that they represent to the safety of residents in unincorporated areas. They are now working on developing siting and safety regulations to address these public safety concerns. Unfortunately, state law prohibits any new rules and regulations from retroactively being applied to already submitted projects such as Seguro. I strongly support the city's proposed resolution so that the residents of Escondido can be protected from the overwhelming dangers when BES are proposed in residential or other inappropriate areas and not subject to strict BES-specific safety regulations. I would also encourage the city to use whatever influence you can bring to bear on the county to deny the approval of Seguro. Part of the Seguro infrastructure would include massive high-voltage Gentile lines within the city limits to connect to an Escondido SDGNE substation. In order to protect the safety of your residents, we ask you to deny AES the right to cross public streets within city limits to reach the substation. Let me close by emphasizing that I genuinely recognize that the energy storage is needed to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels and leave future generations with a cleaner and more sustainable environment. But lithium-ion-based BES-
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Okay. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Phyllis Lederman.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Lederman, and I want to applaud the city of Escondido Council and any other governmental agency that decides to take a pause and create development standards for BES facilities before approving them. They may be necessary and needed, but they need to be located in areas suited for such a facility as they can be incredibly dangerous. AES has proposed the Seguro BES in Eden Valley, and like my husband said, we would share a property line with this facility. In AES's own 2022 annual report filed with the SEC, the company itself warns current and potential investors, and I quote, "In addition, our battery storage operations also involve risks associated with lithium-ion batteries. On rare occasions, lithium-ion batteries can rapidly release the energy they contain by venting smoke and flames in a manner that can ignite nearby materials as well as other lithium-ion batteries. While more recent design developments for our storage projects seek to minimize this impact of such events, these events are inherent risks of our battery storage operations." End quote. Notice they say minimize, not eliminate, the risks. So who would bear the risks once these facilities are built? It shouldn't be the nearby residents of any community. You have no doubt been lobbied by the BES industry and the unions to not pass this resolution based on their self-interest and profit motives. They tell you how much economic benefit they bring and the huge number of jobs that will be added to the local community. However, these jobs are only temporary during the construction phase, whereas neighboring residents will have to live with the dangers forever. These temporary jobs would still exist if the BES was sited away from homes and critical receptors as they should be. Your resolution points out quite correctly that these facilities are remotely managed with low-on-site staffing and would not help to achieve the long-range economic and employment goals of the city. Indeed, they would tie up land that could be used for much more productive purposes that would help to achieve the economic and employment goals of the city. For, I wanted to say, I've lived in the valley for 40 years. For 15 of those years, I actually worked for the city of Escondido. And on a side note, I want to say I'm currently on the board of the Escondido Credit Union, so I encourage all of you, if you're not a member, to join us, just to lighten the mood a little. You'll get great customer service and you can't beat the location. It's steps from your offices. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is JP.
Just hold on one second. Where's that music coming from?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go find out right now. There you go.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
All right. Are we gonna reset that? Because I'm gonna need those seconds.
Go ahead, you can go 10 seconds fast.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor White, and Deputy Mayor, and council members for the opportunity to weigh in on this forthcoming resolution. My name is JP Thaberge. I'm an advocate for Escondido area and unincorporated area residents, and I'm also on the Town Council of the Elfin Forest Harmony Grove Town Council, and I also serve on the Escondido Creek Conservancy Board. We applaud your efforts for bringing some common sense regulation and thought to the siting and placement of battery storage facilities in and near the city. Like the county of San Diego recently did, we urge you to vote yes on this and on actually studying, regulating these facilities using evidence-based and stakeholder-driven processes. Most of the residents in our area appreciate the need for grid resilience that battery storage facilities offer. At the same time, they're also concerned, as you've heard, about the inherent risks these facilities pose residential communities, hospitals, and other sensitive receptors. As everyone knows by now, these facilities do have a propensity to catch fire. This is indisputable. The industry is doing the best it can to downplay these risks verging on blatant misinformation, but their own data shows that for every 1,000 megawatt-hours of storage, there will be on average one thermal runaway fire every two years. This is based on the last three years of failures tracked in their very own EPRI failure database. For reference, a project the size of Seguro will be 1,280 megawatt-hours. So we're pretty much guaranteed failure every couple of years on that project. There have been 89 failures since these projects first appeared, the majority of which have happened since 2021, so the last three years. So this is not a sign of an industry that is maturing, it's a sign of an industry that is in its infancy. The industry and developers like AES make unsubstantiated claims like, oh, these newer systems are designed with robust safety protocols, except for the fact that of the dozens of projects in application phase currently in California, there's very little consistency on what that exactly means. Some propose using water-based suppression systems, while others tout something called clean agent. Some use container-based systems, others, like Vistra's Moss Landing Expansion, is proposing a building-based system in 2024. There is no consensus on what works and what doesn't work, and new safety proposals have no track record currently. As the city of San Diego Fire Master told us in a, in a, in a meeting, they're building the plane while they're flying it. The reason the city and the county are having this discussion at all is because AES, a company with close to $40 million in environmental fines, decided to try to force a massive facility, a utility-scale facility taking up 23 acres in a residential neighborhood surrounded by homes in a very high-fire severity zone. They created an outcry. 3,600 people have signed a petition against it, and they sparked a massive pushback on a much-needed technology. This technology is needed, but by forcing massive industrial facilities like Seguro into a residential area, they have created blowback that will hinder the entire industry and the move towards renewables. Keep these projects in industrial areas away from homes, and thanks again for your time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Douglas Dill.
Good evening. I'm Douglas Dill, 30-year resident of Elfin Forest. I'm also a member of the San Diego Community Planning Group, and I've been the chair for about eight years now. I also volunteer at Cruising Grand for the last 10 years with Steve Waldron. The Planning Group is a recommending body that reports to the county Planning and Development Services Department. We focus on land use matters for the unincorporated areas surrounding, surrounded by the cities of Escondido, San Marcos, Carlsbad, Encinitas, Solana Beach, Del Mar, and the city of San Diego. We heard the initial AES informational presentation at our April 2023 Planning Group meeting. Typically, our planning group meetings, we have three to five attendees in the audience, and typically, they are the applicants of the agenda items we're hearing for that evening. For the AES presentation, there are 100 Eden Valley area residents in attendance. Eden Valley is a combination of rural residential and agriculturally-zoned parcels, and I can comfortably say that 100% of the audience was strongly opposed to the proposed AES project. So for that reason, I support item 13. Also, I would like the city to explicitly oppose the proposed AES Seguro project due to its negative impacts to Escondido residents living in, living nearby, as well as the Palomar Health Hospital and hundreds of households within 100 feet of the facility. Without stringent BES regulations, such facilities need to be restricted to industrial zones. I would urge the city to oppose any AES right-of-way easement requests that would allow the proposed AES BES facility to interconnect with San Diego gas and electric infrastructure located in the city of Escondido. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Corinne Lynn Bonine.
Good evening, Mayor White and members of the city council. My name is Corinne Leidle-Bonine, and I am the Director of Permitting for AES. I live and have spent my entire career working here in San Diego County. Tonight, on behalf of AES, I urge you to vote no on this resolution because it contains misleading and inaccurate claims that are not supported by the evidence. For example, the resolution states that BES projects do not bring realistic economic benefits to the city. This statement is in direct conflict with recent local studies. An economic impact study from the San Diego North Economic Development Council analyzed the proposed Seguro battery energy storage project and found significant positive impacts in terms of employment and local tax revenue. These economic benefits include 458 temporary direct jobs and $11.5 million in local tax revenue during construction, 18 permanent direct jobs, and 17 permanent indirect jobs after construction, $5.8 million in local property tax revenue reoccurring annually, which includes over $3.6 million to Escondido school districts and over $1 million to San Diego County. Beyond these clearly established tax revenues and new jobs, BES project developers frequently partner with local governments and community organizations to create generous community benefits packages, often including ongoing support for local charitable programs and infrastructure benefiting the community, similar to the earlier discussion about Sempra's community benefit to the California Center for the Arts. Another problem with the resolution is the claim that BES projects have a negative impact on land values and discourages employers from locating in the area. Again, this claim is not supported by evidence. The area surrounding the BES project that currently exists within the city of Escondido is thriving economically. In fact, the deployment of BES facilities help ensure grid reliability and flexibility, especially during times of high-energy demand, thereby ensuring that businesses and employers are not impacted by brownouts or blackouts. Furthermore, the resolution makes vague claims about how BES projects are harmful to health and safety. These claims do not acknowledge the rapid evolution of BES facility design and safety standards over the last three to five years. These improvements have resulted in a dramatic reduction in the failure rate of BES facilities over the past six years, even as we've seen an exponential increase in the installed capacity of BES facilities. Finally, the resolution fails to acknowledge the city's legally enforceable climate action plan, which sets the goal of 100% zero-carbon electricity in Escondido by 2035 through an increase in grid supply renewables. Achieving that goal is only possible when the grid is supported by battery energy storage systems. AES strongly supports BES standards and regulations and encourages the city of Escondido to engage with us and other experts and stakeholders to develop meaningful standards and regulations. Again, AES stands ready to work with city staff to ensure that actual-
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
-productive city policies are guided by- Again, AES stands ready to work with city staff to ensure that actual productive city policies are guided by empirical evidence. And I would be more than willing to answer your question if you could allow me a little more time.
We're gonna continue on with public comment, but thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Rowley.
Mayor White, council members, my name is Joe Rowley. I live in the southeast portion of Escondido, so I'm not personally affected by any of the currently proposed BES projects. I have been a developer of large-scale energy projects my entire career, including BES projects and also including the Palomar Energy Project here in Escondido. I was formerly head of project development for Sempra U.S. Gas and Power. Based on my professional background, I believe the findings and statements in the resolution are accurate. The concerns expressed are valid, particularly those regarding public health and safety. The resolution provides important context for consideration of future BES projects. I think most importantly, the resolution serves to put BES developers on notice that Escondido is not a dumping ground for ill-conceived projects. Projects that are well-conceived have nothing to fear from this resolution, in my view. Regarding item three of the resolution stating the city's desire to have stringent development standards for BES projects, I look forward to participating and assisting in that process to the extent I'm called upon, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Cazares.
Good evening, Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Garcia, and council members. My name is Lauren Cazares. I'm a policy advisor at the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce, and we represent over twenty-two hundred member businesses and over three hundred thousand employees regionally. Our mission is to make the San Diego region the best place to live and work. The cha- um, sorry. We are proud supporters of battery energy storage systems, also referred to as BES, throughout the San Diego region. I'm here tonight to ask that you postpone, considering tonight's resolution brought forward by Mayor White and Councilmember Morosco, until there is an opportunity for council members and staff to learn more from experts about BES facilities. Facts are paramount to good policy. BES facilities are vital for achieving Escondido's own climate action goals, and BES projects help jurisdictions they are developed in achieve both environmental and economic goals. In addition to providing grid reliability, well-paying, blue-collar jobs, significant local property tax revenues, and continued investment in the local economy. Modern BES systems are very safe, often outfitted with state-of-the-art fire suppression systems, including sensor technology, twenty-four-seven monitoring, automatic shut-offs, and temperature controls. They are developed under extensive federal and state guidelines. Considering these positive impacts BES, BES facilities can have on communities like yours and the immense amount of misinformation circulating, I hope you will consider pushing this resolution off until the council and staff have the opportunity to work with stakeholders and experts on sensible and reasonable solutions and development standards. Should the council decide to move forward with the resolution tonight, the chamber requests your no vote due to the inaccurate claims within it. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Our final speaker is John Doorman.
Good evening, my name's John Doorman. Thank you for your time. Excuse me. Um, I, I appreciate very much your resolution to oppose the Seguro project. I live in Harmony Grove Village, which is relatively adjacent to the proposed site. I, a lot of my concerns have already been shared by others, the safety concerns, um, you know, the, the toxic smoke, the fact that these fires cannot actually be extinguished, which is something that was confirmed by an AES rep at a meeting that I went to. They have to burn themselves out. They can't be extinguished by water. We have limited in-and-out options for, for residents like myself and my family who live nearby. Aside from the safety concerns that I have, I also wanted to touch on the, the potential financial concerns that residents would experience. So in Harmony Grove Village, we have roughly seven hundred homes. If we, if we assign a conservative average value of seven hundred thousand dollars for each home in that development, and we assume potentially a twenty percent reduction in property value, that's almost a hundred million dollars in lost equity. And so I understand that AES is trying to say this is going to bring additional tax revenue. But aside from just the, the loss in home equity, we'd be facing double, triple premiums in homeowners' insurance, potentially not even being able to be insured because of the danger that this site proposes. So I, I just wanted to share that. It would be not only dangerous to our physical safety, but to our financial security. I'm sure others in my situation are similar, that our home is our primary asset, and, and so that would put that in jeopardy. At, additionally, at one of the meetings that I attended with an AES rep, I asked them directly a question if they could provide an estimate or projection that they had put together of projected revenues or profits. They claimed that they had not even put a budget together for this project. And my concern with that is that if they can't even put a budget together for the project, it doesn't give me a lot of confidence in their ability to run a highly dangerous facility. So I very much respectfully ask you to support this resolution, and thank you for your time.
No further public.
Okay, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Evening, Mayor White and City Council. Mark Rodriguez, Escondido resident. I'm actually on the, on the city property, or city of Escondido property on Citicato Estates Hidden Hills Properties, which is just west of the Palomar Hospital. I'm also a retired electrical engineer, so I have quite a bit of experience with fault isolation and stuff like that. So I get, got a good history background on that. It's not a matter of fact if, but when those battery systems will fail. And I really don't have a prepared speech, but just because of what has happened, when I first moved that, to that area just over twenty years ago, two weeks after I moved in, the Palomar Energy Facility site was proposed. So I spent a lot of time fighting against Mr. Rowley and stuff at Sempra and stuff. Which brings to attention, there were actually two generator fires at that facility that you probably weren't aware of. But there, there's, no matter what you do, there's gonna be a potential of, of damage going on. With regards to home property values, even though my home value has gone up, it's nowhere at the potential that it could be as compared to some of the other residential houses in the, in the area and stuff. But, um, so it's, it's, when they say your home value's not gonna be appreciated, impacted, that's, that's a false statement because our home values are already, have been affected. The other issue was insurance, was obtaining homeowners' insurance was an issue when I first moved, first moved there. With this added issue, more than likely, either we're gonna be dropped by our insurance companies or dispriced out of the ability to pay for insurance and probably lose our homes and stuff. So that's, I, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Good? Okay, thank you. With that being said, I move to approve Resolution 2024 dash one thirteen with instruction to staff to explore a moratorium on battery energy storage systems until proper zoning requirements are put in, and also request that the city council sign onto a letter to the county requesting that they create a working group while they go through their zoning process, allow areas in North County to contribute to that and make sure everybody's satisfied in the end. So I would ask for a second, and then I'll open it up for discussion. Perfect, thank you. Go ahead.
All right, well, thank you so much for the presentation. You know, I support clean energy efforts. I'm part of the Clean Energy Alliance, but I did have direct correspondence with the residents there. The proposal of the storage facility ignores the concerns of the residents. This is unanimous, this is everything that I've talked, everybody that I've talked to has said the same thing. It doesn't take into consideration their safety, the property values, and, and the insurance. As President of RHOA, I could tell you that getting insurance right now, affordable insurance especially right now, is almost impossible in California. And this right here would pretty much be the nail in the coffin to make sure that there's no way you could get insurance. I will always look out for the best interests of my neighbors. And as said before, we're not a dumping ground here in Escondido for experiments or anything of the like of either companies or county or state efforts. So I will support the resolution, and again, I appreciate the work that everybody put into this.
Thank you very much. I agree with what my colleague has stated and also what the mayor had proposed. It makes, it makes sense. And again, it's not anti-energy storage, it's not anti-this particular company, but there are significant concerns. We've had the opportunity to meet with representatives of the company, and those who have been in opposition to this particular project as well. And everyone has a lot of information to share, a lot of passion to express. But the fact of the matter is, if you go to, if you go to the area, if you go to the site, if you go to the homes, if you go in particular to the one house that will be surrounded on three sides, three quarters of the property, surrounded by, and Lauren, you know, is it an eight-foot wall or a twelve-foot wall? Twelve-foot wall. So surrounded, yeah. I thought I was correct. A twelve-foot wall on three sides with blatant disregard to that individual's property, values, their life, anything, because it, it, it just happens to be where they want to put it. Not, let alone all the other homes that are, are in the area. Again, twelve-foot wa- twelve-foot-high walls surrounding the entire project. It's, it's not a bad business, it's the wrong area. It's not the right area. I completely agree with the statements about unknown insurance costs, unknown ability to even get insurance and to cover your home. And I, I don't know what, what individuals are going to be able to do if that project were to, um, to, to move forward. I, I know that if I was one of, if I was in that neighborhood and somehow that got approved, I would be doing it, anything and everything I could to vacate the home and, and sell it if, if anyone would want to buy it. I asked the representatives if they attempted to purchase more of the lands and/or the properties that were surrounded by the area. And the response was, was, was vague at best. It's, it's not the right spot. It's nothing that we could ever condone or endorse. And so our only, our, the only thing we can do at this time is to create this resolution to stay, to state that we are in opposition of that particular project in that particular area for those residents who aren't even residents of the city of Escondido, but who are within the sphere of influence of the city of Escondido. It's the right thing to do on their behalf, and it's the right thing to do to support county standards and county regulations so that we can all know what the, what the rules are gonna be and address them at that time versus right now, which is, it's, it's completely nebulous. We have no idea what's coming down the pike. Those are my thoughts.
So one of the comments that was made was that we should pause and speak with the developers. This resolution was scheduled prior, a number, I don't know, maybe a couple of months ago, and it was pulled off, which provided an opportunity to pause the discussion and meet with the developers, which at least me and a colleague did, I'm assuming that everyone met with the developers, had discussions with them. And, uh, so I don't know what would be the point of pausing it again and meeting again with them. The one troubling statement that I walked away with was, tell us what you want, and we'll get it for you. And that just troubled me and has continued to trouble me, and it still troubles me because I don't think Escondido's for sale. So thank you, um, that, those are, those are my comments.
So first of all, I want to thank the, the residents for coming out. I understand your concern. As far as the resolution goes, you know, there's different information that I'm getting. So one thing, and I'm, I'm a fact person, so one thing is it's not current, um, this project is not currently in the jurisdiction of the city of Escondido. I have, um, gone to a presentation to try to learn about the project because I have been receiving emails and hearing residents' concerns of it. So I understand having housing around this facility is concerning. Also, some things that, that you all brought up around, um, you know, not knowing kind of with insurance. Insurance is so, you know, messy right now in California, so I understand that concern. I didn't hear much about what the county is doing. I know we don't really have, like, these are very new facilities, so there's not a lot of, like, development standards or information about them. Is the county working on something? And, and if so, I'd like to hear more. I don't know who could share, um, who can share what, what the county is doing and kind of what's the next steps? Is someone able to speak to that?
Either JP or Mr. Rowley, whoever.
Thank you. Because I recently heard that there's something happening at the county.
Yes, the, the county is considering, they've asked staff to go develop a proposal for creating a battery energy storage system ordinance, a zoning ordinance. They've also asked the staff to look at a moratorium and come back with a proposal for the board's action for a moratorium. I believe that's due back to the, the board in mid-September. So they're, they have similar misgivings. Their, their misgivings have prompted the, the actions that they're possibly going to be taking. And I'm a stakeholder in their, their process, so I've, I've, I've been following it and participated in the meeting. We don't have anything concrete yet in terms of a proposal from staff to look at, but we expect that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez, can I share with you as well? Because there's a reference in the resolution to the Minute Order Number Eight that was issued by the county on July seventeenth. I'm happy to share that with you and all the council members, so you can look at the staff report and the minute order.
That would be helpful. Yeah, I would like to know what other conversations are happening around, um, um, these battery energy storage projects. And then another thing that I'm hearing, and again, I'm, you know, I'm taking all the information in, is, you know, you're, I have two sets of facts. One is saying this isn't, you know, helpful to our economic development goals. And then I'm also hearing this is an economic development generator. So I'm hearing some contradictory information, and I would like to, I would like to get some, someone to speak to that. As far as like the safety concerns, I heard that, I didn't have time to watch the meeting, but Poway had some type of, um, expert come to their meeting. They had some type of battery storage agenda item. I didn't get, like I said, I didn't get a cha- I just learned about it this week, so I didn't get a chance to watch their meeting. But I would like to have more testimony from experts. I do consider you the resident's experts, so you're one set of experts, but I haven't heard, like, fire chime in on this conversation. And then again, I would, I really want to see kind of what comes from the county, what they're thinking. I'm, I'm not opposed to pausing until we can have more of a regional conversation about where these kind of facilities should be and, and you know, what's the plan for the region for them, because they are so new. And then also addressing concerns that have been brought up today around like safety and the insurance. That's also very concerning. So I have lots of questions still, and I don't feel it's fair for me to, um, adopt a resolution that I did not draft or have any input in, or even have any, like, testimony that, of these folks that I'm, that I'm telling you. So I'm not gonna support the resolution at this time. I have not taken a position on this project. I'm still in the learning phase, so, and I'm very much, I, I hear your concerns, and I will continue to explore those concerns because those are very valid concerns that you bring up. But at this moment, I'm not going to support the resolution. I will be wanting to see what the county is doing. I do support having, Mayor, you mentioned about the, um, a working- I do support having, Mayor, you mentioned about the, a working group or some type of, you know, regional group working on this issue, but there, you know, I want to hear more conversations, I want to, I want to see kind of the complete picture of this. So, that's my reason, I wanted to make it clear, that's my reason why I'm not going to support this current resolution. As it's drafted, I did not have input in this, how it's written, and so I want to wait to get more information before I commit to saying that these statements are true or not. But I hear you, and I will continue to, to look into these concerns and learn more, and also want to engage the county in this important discussion.
Just, just follow-up comments. It's evident that some people do their homework, some people don't do their homework. I've had the opportunity to speak with FIRE and all the other players involved, the departments involved, I've taken the time to do so, so I've educated myself. I've never felt that I can't support something that I didn't personally sit down and write myself. That's, that's astonishing comment to make, and yet we've heard it time and time again from Ms. Martinez, who states that if she's not the one that creates it, she can't support it. So, it's, it's nothing more than smoke and mirrors, just to let people know that she doesn't like it when someone else creates a document or something that she hasn't personally created herself. And it's, I'm, I'm getting tired of it, but that's, that's, that's what's been going on. You can do your homework, you can get the information in advance, or you can say, "I haven't had the time to learn about any of this," and we've heard this way too many times.
And I also always hear you interrupting, and I'm, and I'm tired of your mansplaining. Thank you.
It is not your turn to speak. I've called the question, and we will vote.
Motion approved 401, Martinez, no.
All right, thank you all for that. Item 14 has been pulled from the agenda. Item 15, I do have an item I'd like to add. Oh, shoot, just escaped me. You do yours real quick. And you do yours.
Yeah, so, I've been speaking with the city attorney about coming back. A lot of residents, businesses have been asking about abatement policies. I think there's some ambiguity and some clarity that needs to be made, so I'm hoping that on a future agenda, we could present what we currently have for abatement policies or ordinances, and I think that, I'm not sure if the city attorney or somebody else would do it, but that is my request.
We'll put that together.
Yeah, I'll second that. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Right, I have something that I would like to put on the agenda. Friends of Daily Ranch would like to make a presentation to, to council, so I would like to request that if any of my colleagues would second that for the next available opportunity to, to present.
What is the presentation on?
They want, they want to share with us all that's been going on with them, and things like that, but I am going to have a specific conversation with them about that.
Okay, cool. You got a second, I saw it.
Thank you.
A couple of weeks back, myself and another member of the community approached the Sampa Squaw Band, and with just a question on whether or not they'd like to partner on what we were calling Native American Festival. I am proud to announce that we've decided on Indigenous Day Celebration, and I would like to request that staff explore a partnership between the City of Escondido and the Sampa Squaw Band. Perfect, thank you. All right, council member, subcommittee reports and other reports. Councilmember Martinez.
All right, so I have an air pollution control policy meeting tomorrow, and I did have a briefing on that. Also, gosh, last week or earlier this week, I attended a vigil in memory of Angel Ornelas, who passed away. He was the, the 14-year-old boy who passed away in a hit-and-run accident on his skateboard, and they're still looking for the hit-and-run driver, so if people have information, you know, I know that our police department is still investigating that, so I will share more about the air pollution control district meeting when I have that, and that's all I have for this week. Oh, and also today, we did the MFRO, after over 10 years, the MFRO tour and ribbon cutting, which was really exciting.
As always, always meeting with constituents and hearing about their concerns. The Citricado Parkway Bridge, that was some event, ribbon cutting that took place, I believe, well, earlier this week, and, or last week. The CEA, I have a CEA meeting, Clean Energy Alliance meeting tomorrow. The MFRO was also really cool to hear and to learn about. I got a lot of insight about, you know, the work that's done and how it operates, and it's pretty magnificent, in my opinion. I went to Business Mixer on Monday, and always looking to support small businesses in Escondido and around the area as well, and as always, thank you for their privilege of serving you.
I too went to the MFRO ribbon cutting today, also the Citricado Extension Project grand opening, which was also exciting, long time in the making. North County MMA hosted an event for Angel, the young man who had passed away. It was a boxing event with several pretty intense boxing matches. It was great to be a part of that, and that concludes my report. Councilmember Garcia.
So, I also went to the Citricado Expansion. That was a wonderful, wonderful event. I had a North County Dispatch meeting scheduled today, but that was postponed, so we'll be meeting in December. I attended a California First Jobs Meeting in Encinitas and here in Escondido. We had a dev subcommittee this week that I attended. I also had the opportunity to attend Chief Varso's Faith Leaders Meeting yesterday. That was a wonderful meeting, to see all the faith leaders coming together and discussing topics of importance to the community and their constituents themselves, and I was at the MFRO meeting dedication today also. Thank you.
Just the, the fact that we had the Citricado Parkway ribbon cutting dedication and opening last week, the MFRO ribbon cutting ceremony dedication today, just shows you that if you hang around the council for 14 years, projects that you start will someday come to fruition, and you'll be able to participate in those grand openings. Staff, everyone who, who worked so tremendously hard for the Citricado Parkway Extension, for the MFRO, the, the years, the, the, the time, the energy, the effort, the, the, the thoughts and planning, the designs, everything that went to it, absolutely phenomenal, fantastic with both of those projects, grand slams, and just thank you so much for everything you guys did bring to fruition.
City manager.
Couple things. Do you have questions about ADUs, accessory dwelling units in Escondido, or have been thinking about adding one to your home? Join us at an informational community workshop on August 29th, tomorrow, 7:30 to 5:30, at the Escondido Library. I also wanted to notice that we've had to close Municipal Lot 2 downtown. This is going to be a staging area for Phase 2 Grand Avenue construction, there'll be more news about that coming out, but please consult our website, there's postings on that, and it can tell you where additional parking spaces are downtown in the interim.
That concludes the night. This meeting is adjourned.